So, let's go ahead and call this July 28, 2016, meeting of the Carson City Library Board of Trustees. And we can go ahead and proceed with the roll call.
Chipperson Hayes.
Present.
Vice Chair Solinger.
Here.
Trustee Graber.
Here.
Trustee Liberati.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Form is present.
Moving on to item two, if there are any members of the public that would like to come forward and make comment at this time. Seeing none, we can go ahead and move on to item three for possible action, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes? And are there any changes? In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the June 23rd meeting.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Alright, motion is second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item four, the Friends of the Carson City Library Report.
I think there is a report in your pocket. I will just add to that one thing because this happens between making that the report and the one that we need is. And that is almost the eighth Cina will be doing her second in our Let's Talk series at the Bradley Crystal Store at 6:15. At this time she's going to be talking about new things at the library, but new things that are here right now and new things that might be on the horizon. So, we're gonna have an open discussion afterwards. Like refresh. That's all I want to do.
Moving on to item five, part A, for possible action discussion and possible action to elect a board chair and vice chair. So, I believe it's because we did the fiscal year?
Correct. In the bylaws, it states that the chairman and vice chairman shall be elected from the trustees at the first regular board meeting of the fiscal year. So, return of one year in such office if they get reelected in subsequent years.
I'd like to place Jeremy's name in for to continue as chair.
We each have one, so it's the same thing.
I knew you were, that's why I did it. I wouldn't let you do it.
Okay.
And that's a motion?
Yes.
So, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And then we need to elect a vice chair?
Correct.
Is there a motion for that?
I make a motion that we have Diane Solinger continue as the vice chair. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item B, the public 3D printing policy for the Carson City Library.
Okay, so we did review this at our last meeting and Iris did review it in between the last meeting and this meeting. I'll kind of let her briefly just tell you what her feelings are about the policy and then I can show you where the changes were made.
So, I think for now it's good. I'd like to into some first amendment touch issues. There is not a lot of litigation on this topic. It's fairly new. But I think we're kind of gonna have to see how it goes as time continues. And we are going to be revising the entire policy. We're hoping to do that by the end of the year.
Whose policy? This policy?
This policy, yes. Just to update it. Yes. Just for updates.
And for it to be reviewed by the DA, I don't believe it has kind of the entire teenage period.
So, where does that leave us in terms of moving forward with the 3D policy for the typing?
I think it's fine to move forward as it sits and then we will revisit as we revise the entire policy.
Because it looks like you went through and picked up all of our notes.
Correct.
That's right.
And so, some of the changes were made and some additions such as four examples of unacceptable conduct, see page 20 in the policy, which is the examples of unacceptable nature behavior. And 3D printing policy, the main portion is on page 18 if you haven't gotten it up there yet. Well, so it's on page 18, but I don't have your page numbers on my media.
Should be 29.
Oh, page 18 of the document, but page 29 of the pack.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I got you.
Do you want that first sentence, 3D printing on page 18 to be a complete sentence?
So, such as like.
3D printing is. Print or prints three dimensional objects.
Yes, I can, I can.
Prints three dimensional objects. Why did we delete such as we violate the terms of use of money after?
We did not delete. We just, we added an S there. It said "unch".
Oh, duh. Okay. Got you.
I think it was also capitalized before, so we had to cancel the case.
You guys would love a new policy system. Is there a mechanism for emergency change of policy in case of something?
I believe that was what was revealing it to the employees discretion.
Yeah, I mean, and that's where myself or other managers can make their final say in that. And I think that's where the hearing comes up and the opportunity. So, if they don't like the decision that we made as a staff member, then they can come to the board. We did make the majority of the changes at the meeting in the actual document itself.
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what Jeremy asked.
He has a motion here.
Yeah.
I'll move that the 3D printing policy estimated by staff be approved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Just so the record is clear, do you want to create the changes that were indicated earlier with the two sentences being on page 18?
Yes. From there, we can move on to item five, part C, looking at moving funds to match funds for the first level back staff room improvements.
Okay, so this did come to you. If you haven't been back in the back staff room, there are changes abound. We have paint on the walls today, so if you want to go back there and take a look, it looks really nice, very clean and crisp. But what we did run into and we briefly spoken about it prior, the first quote that we received from Office Depot is in the neighborhood of $57,000, which was way over what we had planned in for. But this, you know, working with affordable office solutions, we were able to come to a reasonable pricing, but it is a little bit more than what we had planned and budgeted for from what you had approved as a board supervisor, we had to hunt, and what the fronts of the library have provided. And so, we were coming to you for the difference there so that we could get that staff space worked out. What we have in that space, just as a refresher, fully eight of our staff members, that's over half of our staff. So, half of our full-time staff will be in that space, and our part-time staff work in that space, and our volunteers also work in that space. So, a lot of what the staff and volunteers do happens in that back room. So, what you're looking at is you'll see there's two different invoices. There's for all the second estimates. One is for all of the furniture and freight for the furniture, and that's $31,394.94. And then you'll see one which is for $2,575, and that's for the installation of the furniture. Because it is cute furniture, so there's connecting to the walls. The city's electrician will be working with us to connect with the wall panels so that there's electricity providing to the panels as well. So, the difference was just to go back to 14,969.94. Correct. I'm just asking for the library. The library gift fund.
Yes, this is an additional.
So, yeah, so the Friends of the Carson City Library provided $14,500. The library gift fund approved $14,500. And so, we're looking for an additional $4,969.94 for a total of $33,969.94 for those improvements.
And the library.
I'm, I'll pull up the report right now. That's what I. I'll just, I'm just gonna pull it up so we can, I can tell you how much it's worth. It is up on the screen as well, or it will be reading up on the screen as well. So, in the library gift fund, there's. At the beginning of 2016, there was $215,619.
Who are the other vendors besides Office?
Office Depot?
Yeah.
We went with Office Depot and then Affordable Office Furniture and Supplies.
Yeah, no other, no other people interested?
Not that were local? That, we, we did contact MacPhie and they never came back with a report essentially telling us that there's no way they could afford the budget that we had provided them.
Who was that?
MacPhie. So, the, so the library gift fund does have more, I don't see it on this report, and this is. So, when we, when we report on the, on the library gift fund, we report what we have budgeted and that we work out with the city, but that's not the actual amount that is in the library gift fund. I should be able to pull that up on one of the city manager's reports to the board supervisors. Usually, it does come up on this report, but what I'm seeing here is what we have budgeted for this next fiscal year of only $67,000, which is not the amount that's in the gift fund. That's just the amount that is budgeted in the gift fund to be spent. Does that make sense? But there is at least $67,000.
And this is count.
Fiscal. Oh. Which just were. Yes.
Well, I'd like to go on record as saying that we should fund the additional $4,969.94 out of the library gift fund to get this thing rolling.
I think that seems good. To answer your question, Cina?
Yes.
What is the $56,372 that's on the first line item of the estimate?
That's on your, the order. I honestly do not know what that is. I would have to ask Affordable Office Furniture.
Shouldn't it be $28,000 instead of 18?
Yeah, but the 18 doesn't add up too much.
Me, I don't.
The 18 is six plus one another, Charlie.
Yeah. Jeremy, I want to try it. Let's try it.
So, I'm not sure what that is under the description. I don't know if that's supposed to be a dollar amount or, there's item numbers on the other side. But if you add up the 18, 1,974, eight of the 799s, six of the 89s, two of the 99s, eight of the 25s, eight of the 395s, and one of the 625, I believe if you get $31,394.94.
Correct. Yeah, that's on the, the other.
It does a separate, that is. Diane? Yeah, sorry. Diane Baker. Are you able to find the original invoice that they provided to see if that $56,000 is on it?
If I can see if I can find that, I'll be back. Is your recollection that each office, modular offices being $10,000?
No, that's not correct. That's totally.
Because if you divide eight into 18,000, you got 2,256,000.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, do we want to maybe table this and move on with the agenda?
Is, are we tabling it until she gets back?
Yeah, just until she gets back. Do we want to move on to the next agenda item? Yeah, so we'll hold off on that until Diane Baker gets back. And we'll move on for now to item six, the library director administrative reports.
Okay, so you should have reports and they should have been labeled and it looks like they are not up at the top, so I am sorry about that. But the first one is the 101, city gift fund for fiscal year 16. And this is 100% of the year last. And so, the bottom line of this report is we are 92% spent in the budget and we did revert money back to the city. Some of that was in salaries and some of that was in turnover line items, and that is a normal thing to view, is to revert back some money and not too much. But that is what you're seeing here. What it does mean is it just goes back into the city's general fund. It doesn't come, doesn't go over to us.
I understand that.
But, but no, it's, we work on a baseline budget and any of our supplemental requests are above and beyond that baseline of a budget. But, and what you'll see is, you'll see the report so far for fiscal year 17, which are not very helpful because that doesn't spend much. So, wait, so what you'll see first is that general fund 101. Then you'll see, so there's the two pages of that. On page 53 and 54. Then on page 55, you will see the detailed budget report for the library gift fund at the end of the year. As you can see there, we had $215,619. We spent $62,487.49. Some of those are funds that the Friends of the Library provide to put towards our programs. So, funds do come in and out of the gift fund based on your approval, as well as based on donations received from the Friends of the Library. So, then you'll go and you'll see the account activity listing for the library's gift fund. And there are wages in here. And again, just to review that, those wages are individuals who are approved by the board to be working. So, Rice is not here today. He is, you can see some of our technological difficulties here. He needs a vacation. But when he films, comes out of the gift fund here, that's approved by the board. And then we do have grants in which we employ staff members to work on those grants, and the matching funds for that were approved by the library board. And that's, so that's what you'll really be seeing here. And then you'll go into each of the line item account activities. Are there any questions? So, moving on to fiscal year, or moving on to the grant reports, which are at the end of the gift fund. So, page 74. 72. So, this is the 6200. These are our smaller grants that you'll see here. And these are miniature, so in our smaller grants, we received $15,683 last year. Then we can move on to the next page, the 6204. This is our anonymous working capital grant. And you'll see here that the annual budget for that grant was $82,902. That is the one that entered. What you are, what you are seeing does not include some of the last Mariposa invoices that hit. So, it's mainly why you're not seeing that yet. So, if there are not many questions about fiscal year 16, we'll move on to fiscal year 17. So, what you'll see with the 17 reports is we are 8% of the year last and we are 1% spent. And that's the detailed budget report for the city fund. Are there any questions about that specifically? Okay, so then you'll move on to the library gift fund. This is where we have budgeted $67,627. That does not mean that all of that does get spent, but those are budgeted line items so that if there are approvals by the board, then the city does account for the block overrides on the account itself. So, then, page 79, you'll see the 6200. These are our grant. We still have the annual budget in there at $15,283. That does not necessarily mean that that's how much we will get from those grants, because that's how much was budgeted in anticipation of the grants that we do apply for, but are our smaller grants. We then have the 6205. This is our newest grant, the Mobile Maker Space, and we are 0% spent there. That we had hit at this point in time, but as you can see, the budget for this project is $30,197. So, are there any questions about any of the financial reports? Would you like to go back to?
Yeah, at this time, we'll go ahead and jump back to item five, part C. Seeing as Diane Baker is, is mad.
For the record, Diane Baker, department manager. What I'm passing out is the recent invoice that we have received this week. Fifty percent is still, you'll still see that number in there. However, you do also see the, what they didn't have in the estimate was the extended cost from reading the price quantity. And then you can see the actual extended cost.
And I'm going to try and pull up the first quote that we've received from them. Because this is still showing what we, what the question was.
Yeah, there's no argument with your, with the column.
Yeah, not exactly what we.
It's that it's just, I'm just curious about what that means. It's almost like.
There shouldn't be a dollar sign in front of it, like maybe it's a modern number or something, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I agree. Did you have a verse with both of them together, the service and the? If that's what I was, just to see if that was the number was, if that was still the same.
I think I'm betting it is, but.
I am trying to pull it up here for you as well. There's an image up there while we are. Okay, so this is the full estimate without them broken apart. And it does still have that in it. And I would have to ask them about that. Is this something where they could conditionally agree that they, whatever amount I can help them?
Okay, so you're ready to redo it?
Iris has a, so I was thinking that if you felt more comfortable, you can approve this with that mistake. Seems like an obvious mistake, just stricken out. And then for some reason, that's an issue, and it'll come back next month. But it seems like an obvious typo.
This stuff's already worked.
It's not already.
Oh, what's that?
No, it's not, it's not here. It's not already working.
But it's going to be obvious at some point that if thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand dollars isn't going to get it done, then you won't be able to work. I mean, if it's going to be this fifty-six thousand, they're just going to come back and say, oh, no, no, that's not the right price. And then you, you won't be able to get it anywhere. So it's going to be like.
Right, because our motion is going to be the, the five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Forty-nine, sixty-nine.
Can I just make a comment? The place is in chaos back there. Because all the furniture's stuffed in the middle of the room so they can paint. So the sooner we can resolve this.
We share your opinion. We know you're back there. We know we're just trying to get a better place for you. We understand.
And that's not even the point. I feel sorry for the staff because everything's in boxes and stacked up back there.
They don't get luxury boxes.
Not that kind of box.
Right, what we're dealing with tonight is just that occupation.
Yeah, right, it's just that.
So if this turns out to be way off.
It's going to come back.
Then we're not going to come back anyhow.
So with that in mind, I would entertain.
Well, and I don't, and I don't think that that is an error. Multiple times I had a conversation with Mike at Affordable Office Furniture of what our budget was. And unlike the other companies, they weren't able to get to that price point, or very close to that price point.
It's such an obvious error, and it's an obvious error.
Yeah, so keeping all that in mind, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll put my motion back in if you approve four thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents additional money from the library gift fund to get this thing rolling.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right.
You have a vested interest in this, you can ask.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Harry Dunleavy carries. In that case, I believe we can move on to item six, part B.
My director's report?
Yes.
So we did not put the Sunday hour survey on the action items. But I am going to give you a report of what did happen. And it gives you guys time to think about this and form numbers on how that will be needed. So what you'll see in the director's report, I'm just going to go through it pretty much, question my question, is how often do you use the library? By far, we have weekly and monthly users, some daily, some quarterly, some yearly. And the others, you do have a separate stapled copy of responders' answers with you, with the names and contact information for adapted. So that's going to be behind the report there. And it's very small. But you can see comments there such as, two to three times a week is when I use the library. So we had a really good turnout. We also had individuals, and I have some of the, some of them here. We had a box here at the library. This was also put in the paper. And so we have newspaper copies of returned items. We have paper copies as well as online copies. All of these were then entered into the online system so that we can actually use the analytics to see what this turnout looks like. So with that being said, the next question was, please select the letter A, B, or C to select the hours you would like the library to have, refer to the image below. And though nothing was blown away, all were actually relatively close. And I think this is also why we need to take some time to think about what is right for the community. Modified hours, which were what was discussed, where Sunday would be a twelve to four. Monday, back open at ten o'clock to six o'clock. Tuesday, ten o'clock to eight o'clock. Wednesday, ten o'clock to eight o'clock. Thursday, ten o'clock to eight o'clock. Friday, ten o'clock to six o'clock. And Saturday, ten AM or ten o'clock to four AM. So sixty-two individuals preferred that schedule. Fifty-seven preferred the current hours that we are open. Forty-two preferred pre-Sunday hours. And five preferred others. Some of those other comments were hoping that enough library would be able to be open at nine AM. Except unfortunately, I do not believe that that is possible with our bundle of staffing currently. And a lot, a lot of the respondents who sent in paper copies, like the paper, from the newspaper, it was modified in pre-Sunday, but not current. But I mean, that's just, that's a demographic that's expressed. So then, just so you are aware of the other survey results, on the next page, on the back of that, has the story time, what the preferred time for story time was, and the preferred day. Now, the preferred time was ten-thirty in the morning. We really wouldn't be able to go to a ten-thirty in the morning very easily without changing to modified hours. And there was some discrepancy in people's answers, you know, preferring current hours, but a ten-thirty in the morning story time. Though that could be on a Saturday, for a Sunday, in our current hour system. And by far, Thursday, the current day, was chosen. As you can see, not as many respondents responded to these questions, and they were not required questions to respond to. Technology classes, the preferred time for technology classes was between six and six-thirty. Very close there and a very similar timeframe. And for days, we, they were really close, but Thursdays did come out on top there as well. So then what you will see is a late edition, it is in all of your packets, is a Sunday hours staff survey. It's not in color, but what you'll see there is at the point of staff responding, there's more staff that have responded since then. So this is now what it looks like up on the screen. We have fourteen modified hours, three current hours, and one pre-Sunday hours. And then they do have comments as well. Most of the comments you're going to see listed in paragraph four after that. And I think it's important for you guys to know how staff feels and why they feel that way in their selection. Are there any questions about the report?
So jumping back to the community survey, and I'm going to show my data nerd for a second. But, so there were a hundred and sixty-six respondents to the survey, if I'm reading that right. And how many, not how many people are we serving, because I know that that's thousands. But do we feel that a hundred and sixty-six people surveyed is sufficient to?
Statistically significant.
Yes, is that a statistically significant survey of the thousands of people who we have?
You know, I, I don't necessarily know what the answer to that is. It was available here in the library as people walked into the library. And so, you know, if they felt one way or the other, there was an opportunity for them to participate. It was online and advertised online through social media and our website. And then it also was in the newspaper. It was in the newspaper for one day, but we received multiple days of newspaper clippings in the mail, et cetera. I don't think that if we, unless we were going door to door or surveying patrons as they walked into the door every single day, that we would get more than that amount. For example, I won't say exactly how many, but we beat one of the city's surveys pretty significantly about people responding to it. And that was to their new website survey, which is on the front page of their website.
See, and I know you, I know you talked to us about this, you know, a month or two ago. But, you know, I wonder about return, return on investment, you know? I mean, I worry about foot traffic, a number of checkouts and things that happen on Sundays versus the other days. You know, you think about in the fundraising world, you think about cost per dollar spent, you know, what's it cost to run the library based on, you know, the amount of services we provide on Sundays? I mean, does it cost, you know, way more because we're using far, because we're getting far much, far fewer people walking in and checkouts happening than it does on like a busy day, like middle of the week? And I just wonder if it's worth it to go, you know, to do all we're doing, you know, for, you know, what might be a handful of people on Sundays? I don't know.
Those that do use the library on Sundays, and one of the staffs made a comment that you have there.
Maybe it's almost they like to use computers.
Yes, they like to use computers. And there are people in our community, we've, we've gotten new customers because they can't come on any other day. So I mean, there is a benefit to being open on Sunday. Now, our busiest hours on Sunday were that block between twelve and five, really, but twelve and four, that we would be able to be open twelve to four, take an hour off the end of Saturday. So open until four on Saturday. And then put hours back on mornings, Monday through Friday. That's the biggest piece that we've received complaints for, so.
I, I would have to say that I'm a morning person. And wait till eleven o'clock to get in here, you might as well just forget about me coming here the rest of the day. I'm not about in the morning. And I know, I have some friends who would go swimming and they would, time they're swimming, they come over for ten o'clock. And now everything's all screwed up, you know? And it's just, you know, it's kind of like, man, I want to get that ten o'clock back. It's just, convenience is not there.
The most effective of our features is those, remind them here, we're ready to get in at ten o'clock.
And just, and just a reminder that you guys are going to vote on it next time. You're not, we need to make a decision right now. I am going to pull up the supporting materials.
So essentially, what you have done though has not cost you any money. Take an hour's staff and just move them around.
So, so potential costs would be heating and cooling, building. However, with our current heating and cooling, we don't really get to make a decision on when it's heated and cooled. It just doesn't fit a level. It's, it's controlled by temperature theoretically. I mean, it's kind of cold in, in this room right now. But it's theoretically controlled by temperature. And it was heating and cooling on Sundays whether we were open or closed. We, we've seen lower usage on Sundays, but not minimal usage on Sundays. We do have two Sunday staff members sitting in the audience right now. I don't know if they want to comment towards the report of just activity on Sundays or what your feelings are.
I know a lot of people who have pulled me.
Oh, I have to go up in your name, but what does, I would say your name.
I mean, I know a lot of people who, who they didn't really like, Sundays, especially Sunday afternoons. They're not as much, a lot of people can't, can't talk about anything. If you're like, go to church and then the library now. So, you know, kind of after a couple of o'clock, hour, they're like, yeah, on that, growing. It's a quieter, calmer day. And I think a lot of people like that environment, especially during, like, during the week on Saturdays. We actually enjoy it a little bit, like, you know, so we have plenty to compete with. But it's a little bit calmer, a little bit quieter crowd, so that's what I think.
Now that was great learning after. On Sundays, we definitely have a steady amount of people. I think it's a good amount of people that we wouldn't want to take that away from the community. But also continually, just being here two months, I've heard quite often that they want to be open earlier during the week. So I think the balance of serving our Sunday population and also our regular week population too. But it's steady enough on Sundays that I think going back to not having that would be an issue for the community. So to me, it's kind of like you need to have that balance. So both, because I think there's a need in both areas. And we just don't have Sunday for our staff, which really is what we need, right? That's a different story.
I'm looking at the tutorial schedule and it's two forty-five.
Correct. And one of the reasons we moved to being open on Sunday was the demand from the school district and the students from the school district to be able to have a place to use technology on a Sunday. And already get to leave. A lot of kids have activities going on on Saturday, but not on Sunday afternoon. So I think that would be something we would want to keep.
That wouldn't necessarily affect the tutorial hours though, if we changed it to four.
Correct. It would just shift them some. But if we went to being closed on Sunday, we would not be able to provide that sort of.
Well, let me ask you, why, why would that necessarily be that way? I mean, you have a. I mean, you have to gate the closes down the rest of the library. If you had staff that would come in there just for them, what would it matter?
We're a public library, and I believe that we should be open to the public when we have staff here and not dedicated to Carson City School District's activities.
This community has been after this library to be open on Sundays for 20 years I've been here. And I don't think we want to be back to not...
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that digital hours would say that you can do whatever you wanted. Because you can shut the gate and say, hey, we're only open for here, but digital is gonna stay open for another hour and a half.
So, because this isn't an action, I know we do kind of need to, but I did want to just bring up this chart that I did have last time. And I do have this PowerPoint on, I believe I have it on our meetings and notices. If not, I will make sure that it does get up there. But what you'll see is the screen is Sunday circulation, and this blue is door count for Sundays. So Monday's door count is a little bit higher here. But if you look at the circulation on Mondays, yes, it's gone down since we've been open on Sunday, but Sunday circulation is higher than if you would add Sunday and Monday together than Mondays alone. So with that, I'm happy to conclude my report, and then we can address this at the next meeting.
So we'll think this over in the meantime, like we have this as an action item next time.
Now, as part of my director's report, though, I do have Diane Baker, who was going to report on our grants, so that you are aware there is a written report as well.
Hi, I'm Diane Baker. And you do have the written report on file there. There's just a couple of things that I do want to highlight, especially with the NT1 grant that's wrapping up. We have been contacted by Writer for the Library Journal, and we are going to be included in an article that is going to be on workforce development in libraries. And they're doing a follow-up because a year ago, a little over a year ago, the announcement of the NT1 Nevada's Working Capital Project was in there. So I've already been communicating with the writer, and we're looking forward to having the project featured in another Library Journal article. So that one is very good. As you can see, what I'm really excited about with the Working Capital is that we have such a strong finish. We had great participation with one of our super fast tracks that was specifically dedicated to the local main factors. With that group, we had Clickbon and Red Power participating in the program. And we had, and you see there, we had seven graduates a month just from Clickbon. And Clickbon did give the individuals specific time off to participate in this and to work with the instructor and to take the proctor exams here at the library. So I think we had a strong finish with that one. And we do have several options that we're pursuing to keep the program going in one fashion or another, since we have such a great wrap-up with that. Habits of Minecraft, you've seen the things going through with that, and of course, that's very much a learning challenge as that continues to popularize. The other item I'd like to highlight just on the second page was with Diana Ellis, site visitor at the Institute of Muse and Library Services. We had a representative from the institute here doing a site visit in Nevada, and our library was identified as one of the showcase libraries for her visit. And we had really nice feedback from her after the battle, either and I, contact from her with the exciting things that our library is doing, so it was really nice to be recognized from the federal level as to the strikes that we've been making with the LSA program and other federal programs. So did you all have some questions on the items that we had here, or are they related to the grants?
I think it's great that they're coming out and following up on that article. That's really, it's really neat.
It's all phenomenal news.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
Did you catch your typo, Minecraft?
I know.
Allie, you're both here.
What was called Minecraft?
Well, we did call the grant Minecraft, but we have, the actual program is Minecraft. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Moving on to item seven, we have our other administrative reports, starting with our creative learning update.
So within the report, I have some really good images on the right-hand side that support summer learning and the activities programs that are really popular. The Zoom classes did really well, also our yoga classes, we're really using a couple of those. The second one, Minecraft, as mentioned, is very exciting. The kids love it. We have parents coming in and participating in two of those, so it was a good turnout right there. Craft Tuesday and our Make It Nevadas are also heavily, lots of participation in those. We just did an A-game for the Make It Nevada, and we had a fun time with goggles and kids, running, kids work for them, watching things. It was just a lot of fun, they really like it. So the programming for summer learning is really going well. Our participation, program registration is at high speed. And just moving forward, a lot of that Making It moves, a lot of it was implemented before our full team was here, and just getting everyone in and running that program. The other thing on it is the mobile Wi-Fi controller. The friends did support for that project, so we'll just go forward to try and get that going within us. And I think that's just a really good opportunity for our community for further outreach of different areas that maybe we can't reach. We can go to them being centrally located. I think that's gonna be really feasible with that little...
Hotspot.
Hotspot.
Still within it, yeah.
Within it, so it would provide Wi-Fi services, being able to actually provide library cards and provide checkout of that bike, so we could take it to events, we could take it to health initiatives, we could take it to farmers markets, we could hit a lot of places and actually check out and increase, of course, not door counts, but circulation within that program. And we could just get people to think of the library in a different way. I think a lot of people thinking about a library is not really what we provide here at the Carson City Library, so I think it's a great opportunity to expand in various areas.
Phenomenal.
Why do you also allow them to charge their phone or something?
We did talk, it really depends on how we build that controller, but I think that was something that we wanted to build in it, charge at our station, talk to us, learn more about it, get information on programs, look at our books, possibly check them out. I think it would be really flexible.
You can check them out from the trailer, can you turn the libraries, map the trailer?
Both, I think you drop it in City Hall too.
City Hall?
It would be just like any other book you checked out, you'd return it the same way. It's part of our system, so our system would be on it.
So it would be not a set drive to City Hall?
It could be any of them, you could drop it off here, drop it off there. Yeah, or is it what drops to City Hall? Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Moving on to item B, the access services update.
Kathy Rush, access services manager. So, you have the access service table for your packets. And this is the time of year between our fiscal year budgets that things tend to slow down in terms of ordering materials because we have stopped ordering from last year's budget, and it gives us a little bit of time to catch up on some other projects. So for example, doing a little cataloging that needed to be done for some equipment in the libraries, laptops, catalogs, Chromebooks that will be for a public use and staff use, and also some Dell laptops that will be replacing some of the older ones that we are still circulating. We will be switching all of our, so people have some newer technology for patrons to use. In the meantime, we're also setting up a new fiscal budget for the book budget for ordering materials. And a part of that is renewing contracts to some of our major vendors who do provide the services that allow us to not only purchase but also catalog and process our materials. So that is also in your packet. I guess last but not least, we've been very busy working in that room trying to organize and move everything while at the same time keeping, you know, ourselves busy toward a new fiscal year. We have started ordering, returns will start coming in in the next week or two. And patrons were very happy because they have been interested in wanting to order items that we have had a little bit of a high risk in order. So we're up and running and going forward. Any questions?
If there's any curiosity where some of this processing might happen, we have taken two of the office spaces upstairs that we are working on making into public spaces, and those are now our processing areas for new materials coming in, so that that doesn't stop what we're in the process of doing in the background.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item C, the collection development update.
Amy Lauter, collection development. Like you heard Kathy, we have been in a little bit of a pause in getting new materials in, but you had some extra money at the end of June, this year, so we were able to get a whole bunch of new order items. It was very exciting. And so that made me think of kind of looking back, we started giving over my classroom work here back in 2011, and it has skyrocketed since then in usage. The turn you have in your little packet, that's just our checkouts at this library, not over the entire country. That's just us, and it's gone up by a huge amount every year. It's still going up, it's just working really well. And it was very exciting, getting those extra books, and especially going down to the pause and getting other new things while we work out budgets, as you see in the second part, we've kind of restructured the way we divide the ones and who orders what. So yeah, since we've pushed how our firm is organized. So we've had a pause in ordering, but we've been very easy with all of these things. And also kind of looking at electronic resources, like really putting them there, deciding to override, like, you know, what we're keeping, what we're going to let go, and what the exciting ones we just kind of worked out is blocking any of those, and still a database for everybody to use. Wow, very exciting. And taking some of the dirty languages and all of the wrong things that's been between wonderful resources. I want to pour this water.
Do you have any questions on the collections?
Thank you very much, your question. Guys are like small. With that, we move on to item D, the youth liaison board trustee's update.
Are you giving the youth liaison report, or now we need to write it back?
The report on resources we have. So we are in the process now of rebuilding the team leadership council and team advisory board. So once that is up and running, we'll be up a lot of the officials. We will be more streamlined in our programming. We will be having our volunteer hours that can be recorded and work with National Opera Society, in local qualifications. This right now is in the process of just rebuilding. We have a lot of team volunteers also helping at the summer learning challenge throughout the summer. They've been running the table, they've been also helping us with some programs and earning hours that way.
Very good.
The one thing we are looking for that is, is we'll be sure to please on to kind of build some partnerships with the students there. They're out for summer and they return next week.
We want to reach out to all of the school districts and charter schools and other school orders, say, they all are welcome here.
Kind of for smaller schools do not have as much administration around as the school district does, and even a lot of those take off a lot of time through the summer, because sometimes they can't really actually take off time, we have to explain this. So that's a thing that we'll be starting up very soon.
Excellent, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to item eight, board member announcements and requests for information. Does anybody have any announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, public comment. If there are any members of the public who would wish to address the board, they can come forward at this time. Seeing none, we can move on to item 10, for possible action, adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Nope, we're staying. Okay, is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.